And we'll put a role call. Jeanette Hampton.
Here.
Jenna Rickumbow will be here, but maybe a little late. Grace Lindman.
Here.
Marissa Cocker.
Here.
And Heidi Wannenius here. And our first item is the 2025-2026 Northwest Regional ESD Local Service Plan.
Yeah, so the service plan comes to the board every year. I want to go through it. I had asked someone from the ESD to cut it, but the board refused tonight also. So they were able to. I said, let me go through with the board if there are questions that I can't answer, or they want someone to come back. We could reschedule for next month. I think I read somewhere today we could do March first, so I'll go through the slides. The slides pertain directly to us. There's also a video. I forgot to ask Marissa, can we watch the video?
Maybe.
So I will just go through just a few things. We go to the next slide. Our local ESD encompasses these four counties, and I think there's 25 school districts. I'll also state before, I was not involved this year with the local service plan. And I didn't have a conversation with Sheila to see what her involvement was, but so I'm learning some of this stuff as we go, but it hasn't changed a lot from the last half, so. We can go to the fourth slide. So there's a video, and this student is actually our student who's a senior last year.
You're going to see the video.
Yeah. It's a couple of videos.
For dollars with Liberty Mutual. Crazy what you can get with those savings.
Pretty early on, we knew that Rutledge had some delays. And I was recommended very early on to get in touch with ESD. As a mom, you know, my biggest fear for him is that he's not going to be included. It's really scary thinking that he won't have the same experience that other kids have.
When we got his diagnosis, a whole plethora of fears. Fears of the end, not for the future. Is my child going to be able to go to school? I cried and said, I don't know if I can send my child somewhere when he's not verbal. He can't tell me he's mistreated, or if he's having a bad day. I didn't really have high hopes. I thought we were going to get caught the very first day. I actually didn't even leave the parking lot for the full three hours. I had wrote them out a three-page paper on his cues, and this sound effect means this, and this motion means this. And they read it, and they took it to heart, and they shared it with all the other teachers that would be working with him. And he made it through that first day. And when I came to pick him up, he was walking in a line with other kids, and I was just shocked. So to see them accommodate him and pull him in as much as he's willing to be pulled in, but then give him the space he needs when he's not, it's so relieving, but it's also gives hope for the future, that he can have an education, that he can learn all the things that the other kids are learning, but in a way that works for him.
I like to keep a good chain of communication between us. And, you know, it might be new for you, and it might be new for me, but I think we can figure it all out together in the end.
The second time I went to our school, I was going through a few health issues at the time, but I never, I didn't realize how bad they were until I got there. The staff members and the student leaders were helping me in any way that they could. And that made me really feel like I belonged in that community and that I was noticed there.
When I signed up for student council was a big one because I actually felt like there was meaning for me going here. I signed up last year for vice president, and now I am president of the Suffolk Academy. Makes me feel really good knowing that people care and that's inclusive.
Joined the tennis team this year, and even though I'm legally blind, I have a great time playing tennis, and the coaches are really supportive, and the team is really supportive. It's just a great community.
Ninth Grade Success Network is a program that is scattered across Oregon. We all work together to try to make a change in the school and have a more positive impact. I felt a sense of community within the people that I've never had before. Never had one-on-one conversations with, but I felt very safe and able to speak freely in that room.
Yeah, you can definitely tell talk, and we all really want to make a change and help.
I felt included when they chose me as a candidate to be part of a quality group. Before, we didn't have any person of color. I know that I wasn't just talking about myself only, but I was talking about other people who felt, you know, like.
I'd say it's rather awesome to see her thrive and make more progress as a kid. Growing up, I didn't have that. I didn't know that I had a learning disability. They didn't know and check me until about fourth grade. So getting the services that she has now to thrive makes me feel so much better as a parent.
But yeah, that's the toy that's important. Who's on your shirt?
Do you have any friends at school you want to tell me about?
Yeah.
Yeah? They are nice to you. You're right.
Catch.
Your turn. Catch.
Catch.
Hey, Zaden. How does school make you feel?
Good.
Good? What's your favorite?
Can you do it to him?
Oh, God, did he?
My son was in a neurotypical preschool class this year, and we saw a lot of growth because they met him where he was at. I've seen kids go out of their way to hold my son's hand and bring him into a game. You just see them light on the inside, and you know that they feel included because you can still see it when they're not. He now says, I love you more, and he's just a ray of sunshine now, instead of being so insular and angry towards himself. He's becoming just a happy, beautiful child that I know him to be, and he's showing it to the world. So I'm so thankful.
What's your favorite part about your school?
Everything!
Can you say goodbye?
Bye.
Have a good day.
Gabba Penton is bringing you.
Well, that just provides a spotlight on some of those services that the ESD provides, and I'm going to go over a few more. The first slide is just a spotlight on this past year when the district used this word, ESD services. The first one is the sixth grade, which actually fifth grade, around 110 fifth graders, six high school students who use, which just been out of their school. And even though that's considered an ESD service, we have reimbursed through the Oregon State Extension Office.
OSU.
OSU Extension Office. One of the big parts of the spotlight video is we currently within our district have 54 students who are served. It says EI or ECSC. That's preschool services that the ESD provides. Quite a few. We provide transportation for them too. And then we have 79 students enrolled in the migrant education program from our district. And when they have events, it seems like there's a lot more because of the bike chase around the districts, but we have that. We've had 14 support staff from the ESD provide services back in 2024. And then all the participation on the blue square. And a lot of these have been really good for us this year. Ninth Grade Success Network. High school works directly with staff from the ESD on the Ninth Grade Success. And as you know, from our last data, we've shown we have very high Ninth Grade success. And then the ones that have been, and I got caught up on this the last couple of days, earlier, literacy instructional coaching, and Oregon Response to Intervention, they've been really supportive. Aster and those are part of the reading program. And I heard nothing but great things about the staff in the ESD that's been supporting our staff and direct working with them. And then the step up, which I don't know exactly what that, what services they've been providing for us. So the local service plan, which is the next slide, there's two slides. There's really three parts to the local service plan. One is core services, one is the menu of services, and then the next one is integrated guidance. So core services are shared services, but they're available to all districts within the ESD. Superintendents get together in the fall, back in October, and they decide what those shared services would be. And I'll reuse something that we use here. Then we have a menu of services. We have credits with the ESD, allowing them to go through and pick what we want to use for them. We'll go over some of those today. And then I know Stephanie has brought two integrated guidance. And the ESD has been working really well for us on the integrated guidance plan, and I haven't had much contact this year. The role of the school board on the next slide, be sure the ESD local service plan must be adopted by the board or approved on a record March 1st by resolution. Two-thirds of all the point in school districts that handle the recent majority of the people, so all 25 school districts will vote on this service plan in the next couple of months. So the next one is talks a little bit about how the money is broken down by the ESD in sort of a unique way, how they split it up into dollars, but 25% of all ESD money goes to the district for allocations. 25% are spent on core services, which I'll go over here in a minute. The 10% of the formula goes to fund the ESD staff that work in most of the days. Administrative support, yeah, administrative. So we talk about core services. These are the ones that every district in the our ESD has. And this one sort of defines by law what these core services have to provide. So they're really from improved student learning to maximizing operational fiscal effectiveness, and we use some of those. So the next one, and I'm just going to take you. It's just a timeline. When it talks about how they can come up with this local service plan, that's sort of the timeline. Their ESD has already adopted the plan in December. And then you'll remember the superintendents agreed to that plan. It's embedded in this presentation, so. For core services, there's a list here of core services. And I can tell you, we don't use all of them, but we use some of them. We use emergency closure, flash alert. That's all the notifications we put out. Forecast 5, maybe you want to talk just briefly about that?
That's a third-party software that I use, one of the pieces I use for the board reports that I create. But it's been a great program where all of the schools' data, not just our school, is being housed. And so like I'm using it to estimate revenue or enrollment. And we use it during negotiations. We can pull salaries from, you know, neighboring districts or and it's a great asset.
We also use library services, network services. The network services in the core in the past has been the key that when we're going with other districts, 25 other districts, however, ever other districts use, it's a lot cheaper to do it together than it is for us to try to do our network services to fire stop. It would be cost more than what we've done now. Really common thing about instructional services, Ninth Grade Success, we don't use tenant services that much at all from ESD. But we do use the Irredency, which I talked about briefly. We've done some, they've done some grant banking for us. I know Kate has mentioned they're doing some grant, ESDs do grant banking for us. Some equity work with Aster to do it. So.
What do they do for attendance services?
You know, they're in the past, it's more than like any tickets out, those type of things. And so we tried to get away from that. Do what we're expecting paid by the state now that looks at how we're doing attendance and data and stuff like that, but in the past, we could hire a lot of tickets. We've gotten away from that.
We don't use our cybersecurity or?
Use the what?
Cybersecurity.
That's part of our, part of our network services. The menu of services, which is the next two, five menu are available to select, and we don't use all of them because they cost, but go to the next slide. So on this first one, this is administrative services. We are in discussion, putting them right down, and let the board know that for the ESD to take over our investigations for Title IX and civil rights. And after we dealt with one of them in the past year, it's pretty lengthy, and it's hard to get our staff trained on them. And it's, it would be to our benefit to allow them to do it. Doesn't mean that we're not hands-on, we're providing help and support, but they have staff that are trained for it. So, and we did use it on this previous one we had. Just because we, there are certain parts of it where you can't do the investigation, you have to have a third party do it. So that's the only one from this one that done from administration. On the next one, under instruction, we use the bottom to the MTSS software technical support. Should I show you all of that news?
Multi-tiered system of support.
Okay.
Like that tier one, tier two, tier three.
All right. And then we do use the outdoor school, the very last one. But we choose to probably get with these. And then on the last one, early variant, we do provide funds for early interventionary childhood and special education. And networks.
On this one, this one, we use a lot of the items. Travis can stop, but FM rentals, our O B services or P T services.
Lots of them, specialists.
Yes.
School site, yeah. We used to also get this office, but we still have one that we get through the ESD. The rest we're hiring in-house, but yeah. The, really depending on the student need, audiology and alternative communications and assistive technology. We'll call them, it's a specialist who will come in and help us do a test run on things to see if technologies are good fit for students. And we can borrow their technology for, you need to make first, make sure it's a good clip. But yeah, this is over.
Then the previous, this year, we were doing our YTP program, our U transition program. That has changed.
Then all of this is up there because we can, and I think we do have one at Aster, but we now hire our own speech language. They have one at Aster that they still have in the ESD. And this again is a menu we can choose. Next slide.
On the
Right, no question.
On the technology, we use the criminal background check system. District technology, purchasing, we needed that definitely to help us. Public Works is where we do all of our trainings. And then the school ERP Pro is our financial system, so that's a big one. Synergy is our student information system.
And our I V system now, before this first step, that was also through the so our I V writing software is all. This is the part of my mind that we do use, don't have funds for early and the children job, which we're required to do.
Craig, when you're talking about big menu and you're using these services, these are like add-ons to, is it, is it charged by each time you use it? Or is there a little fee that we pay yearly?
Depends on what it is.
What it is, okay.
Like the financial, you know, the technology pieces, most of them are just a set dollar amount. Special, that EI, E I, E C, S E evaluations, those are every time we need one, we get charged. Our criminal background is per how many.
Okay.
So it depends on what value it is.
But then one on specialty, I mean, obviously we have a kid that needs to go to the.
Yeah.
Yeah. So like our school site is 100% through this. Either through credits or we go, we pay for beyond the credits. Then we also have a Spanish bilingual S L P who can do evaluations in Spanish, and so we will pay her hourly to kind of do a valuation for it. So she's not on our regular payroll. But we kind of contract through the ESD.
Perfect. Thank you.
So this is sort of a, somewhat of a new one that the ESD was funded with the students' success act of integrated guidance. So all the work that we brought to the board, the ESD does provide that support for us. And then on page 20, they provide a list of things that they possibly could use, including the Irredency, the Success, multi-tier systems. We did, I think they did some construction around those now literacy-wise. They did some community engagement as part of the integrated guidance. They did some story circles for students and adults earlier this year from the store. So those are these services. I know the ESD is concerned about these services because the most recent governor's budget came out. Kind of integrated guidance for ESD's support right then. I haven't been on progress on that. Some other things that they do, they recently have done grant funding. And so I can, I can work with Kate, and I don't know how Kate connected with the lack of quality ESD and say, I want a grant written. Here's a grant. I'll go right up for you. That's pretty much how you do it.
Yeah, actually, she, I just told her what our project was, and then she, she goes out and searches different pockets of money, and then you sign things every once in a while. We'll see how great it is.
And then two slides from now is just other services that the ESD provides. They call it value-added. They will charge us more by the services they provide. And looking at it now, we do use quite a bit of it. The one in the far right, we received in the last two years, probably over $400,000 to $500,000 of rent grants from equity mentorships, and they provide all those services, support for those rent bands. Migrant ends in there. They do have a career program like we do for teacher story. We're trying to make it work so that we can, they can support us with ours, but I'm glad that's my goal, make it work right in the year so that they can support your teacher story programs. They also do a lot of professional building for my sense of. So that's the two, the three areas, and then the add-ons. And then so any question on the local service plan? I appreciate the services we give to the ESD. The ones we give and they ask for, especially the menu items and more services. So I think it's especially like this year with professional development with literacy, I'm really impressed. This is being brought tonight for this is for information, but I'm going to read you for it.
The next one we have on the list is Oregon whip that are leading the group.
Yeah, so I just brought this tonight, and the PowerPoint that's in here is the same one we had there. I just wanted to have the board the opportunity to talk about how things went. And then sort of we could talk about next steps. If we can go just to the very last slide and whole thing and just have a physical short discussion about. Because I have some ideas based on some of the comments being made, and I can also share with you some things that I'm doing the next couple of weeks around this. So the last page, which I don't know what the page is, is a short message with overall thoughts of the meeting. Something we missed in communicating for legislators, because I do have videos with them, and there were possible next steps. I have some ideas to get back on some, so.
So there's a lot of good comments and the audience there as well, or something.
It was very.
I our legislators finished here, but they don't have a lot of hope, I guess, is the word for it. So like, how could we get in touch with ones who?
I could tell you that that comment has been, has been a thing of a lot of people who are at the meeting that they didn't, and I was one that did that, compared the process that that we were to come out of the Ways and Means Committee before they even know. So I'm going to talk to them again next week about what that actually means sooner or and what are these things that we do outside of our own legislators to get into the Ways and Means Committee.
Yes, because I, I mean, that's who we need to get to, I guess, ultimately, is how do we do that, or?
I mean, writing to the government.
Right.
But is there a way we can, so I guess my thoughts afterwards were did we write some kind of a form letter that we can send out to people, and then people can send it out to, like they can click on and send it to people, and then we can have them send it to Governor Koteck. We can have them send it to all of the representatives, and then like, like everybody was saying, like the more that they get, like, yes, they want this, they want this.
Not necessarily.
Read the whole.
Right.
They just see.
That's not much for.
And they kind of. But I know, I've done those kind of title form letters where you can just click on it and copy and paste it, and you can make it your own if you want, but or you can just send it up like password, and so that might be something we could, I'm sure parents and staff would be interested in that.
Yeah, I had thought of like I said, I'd be with them again next week. And a couple of other meetings about this point this Friday, but I thought I'd talk to them. Get after that, by the beginning of February, the latest you get a small order together, get stuff like that. I know Felicia said through, hey, Candy Thornton through OSCEA said that one of them was interested in our process, so. I need a couple of weeks to learn a little bit more information, and then I'll get this brief together, organized, and push them together. And you know, some of the same work comes with particular one. So we've learned some of it.
I think it not just for our legislators, but for the Ways and Means Committee, not for their society.
Yeah.
Find out when you have some.
Yeah, that's one of the things that you want. I'm starting to send letters out, people have been very particular about it. But if I get that group together, I would appreciate if one or two of them could involve track muscles.
Well, I think too, I kind of hit on it that I felt like we were preaching to the choir because they do support what we do here, especially Senator Weber, having been a teacher in the school district for so long, that Representative Javady is learning still, and I think that that I think how he shared the process was kind of a shocker to people because we just assume they're there on the floor, they're pounding the table, and they're getting it done, and they're not able to do that because they're not even seeing the stuff. So I think that that goes back to what you're saying, how you got getting the information out there for people to realize this and then sending stuff and triggering that Ways and Means Group to go, huh, we're giving a lot of letters pertaining to this particular thing. Let's look at that. Yeah, we have to hit, I think, much more than just our feature, for sure.
The one thing I was going to ask was, I'm sure you're going to be with them next week, is I lead with them with the other county superintendents. Who are those?
Yes.
Specifically, who are those?
Yes.
So that we know.
One of the things that came up in that meeting too, that was, you know, it's an ongoing frustration for me, was the, I mean, I think it was Senator Weber that was talking about a bill that came through that sounded really great that was providing funds, and I can't remember what it was for, but like, this would be a great thing. You could vote for it. And I just, I have a lot of, and again, like, I don't know who you go to to talk about this, but like, why do we have all these separate bills for funding our schools? Why can't all of that just go into the state school fund? Like, and it'd be sustainable. But I just, it's like, like, anyway, like you get the money for three years. We find that we're successful with the projects that we implement with the money and then we can't sustain those things. And that's super frustrating. And so I don't know, like, I don't know, I feel like that needs to be part of that. Letter.
Yes, and there will be over a thousand bills in the reduced public access session to education.
Right, and, and.
We have people that.
And I feel like our legislators, like, it's kind of a, like a no win situation because we want that money, right? Like, I don't want to say no to that, but like, can you say, can we think about putting this into the general?
And I can tell you more and more, and it's what we do more and more. Whether separate like that means more and more reporting, which. There's some districts that are having people just do the reporting that's required. We're not big enough to do that, we have.
Seems like a system. Or even if it was like after three years and it shows that we're showing that it's working for us, then that would go into the general. And we wouldn't have to keep showing, you know, like we've already shown that it's working.
If you can't show it them after years, I understand, okay, fine. But when we're able to do it and then we can't keep it going.
So please don't raise that point next week. There might be others to address still then. So there is one other area that I will work on in the next couple of weeks. Reaching out to our federal congressional staff because of better money that we brought up to discuss the last day. They're just, as we go, I want to just get it back into Washington DC right now. So by February first, I will, I don't know if I can be with them online. I don't like it being with their staff, it's ugly something, but. Next week when I meet with the other superintendents, I'm going to have a discussion with them because they might as well be in the second meeting also. So I'll let you know when that meeting is. It is like, it is just, the meeting is just protection of federal funds. Because that, like gracious, could you like driving up the state school fund? Because if we have programs we use federal funds for and we need to pull on those programs. And like, you've got to run a program to build a state school fund. I will, by the first of February, I will have that something scheduled with the federal.
I'm for student board representatives selection process discussion?
Yeah, so we had this conversation last year, then it sort of got delayed about how student representatives are selected for the board. And to be honest, the way our policy is, which I found in this, it's one of our newer policies in 2003. But it talks about how that is selected. Did I ask Mr. Jackson to be aligned? He don't want him here today. To be aligned and him discuss further what that looks like at the high school and how that is selected. So Lynn, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
And I'll also, I'll give them the opportunity to explain that. But I also just, just to let people know, I have OSBA bottom policy that they put together for districts. And I went searching a little bit and I went from Tiger Twalton, I think a couple. And then Newburgh, I think, and Tillamook. Just that's just searching their life section. So give Mr. Jackson the opportunity to see how they're selected and then give feedback to the board on that's okay. Or if you guys want some input or whatever it's like, so. Lynn, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hoppus. So first, thank you for sharing with me the previous adopted policies by both the larger school district with Tiger Twalton and Newburgh, as well as probably our closest twin with Tillamook in size and nature. I found it intriguing that the larger school districts had a very complex, in my opinion, a rather complex process of selection as well as responsibilities that were outlined for those student representatives. But ours currently adopted by the Astoria School District and that of Tillamook's are very similar in which the board requests that the high school student council to select and confirm a representative. And the manner of selection is determined by the student council. What that has looked like over the last few years is having that presented to the student council in a rather informal manner. It hasn't been a very structured or formalized process. And to be very frank, we have not had a great interest amongst our student body members, especially in the last 10 to 15 years with regards to being in that particular capacity. So it has been one of which usually I have one or two candidates. For a couple of years, we had a student body representative. And then we had a student body elect, representative elect. And so that seemed to work well, but this year we struggled. So as a whole, it's been an organic movement, not so formalized, coming from the student leadership council. And then with my working with them, having a mentorship process in that selection.
So Lynn, are you saying when there's, when you're struggling, it's a struggle to get someone to, like, are you, I do the bottom toll thing. Are they, are you kind of saying, I really want you to do this because we need someone? Or they're just not wanting to do it because of activities and jobs and?
I think activities and jobs, Ms. Sampson, I think that's part of it. I think the fear of public speaking is a real matter. And I do believe that there's a, a high regard and esteem for the school board and the superintendent. Those titles are rather imposing in the eyes of a 16 and 17 year old for many. And so I believe the combination of being a representative to offer public voice in that esteemed forum could be intimidating. So I have done a lot of recruitment and encouraging of, I think you would be great in that role to try to garner up interest. I usually start that process in the spring heading into the upcoming year. At one point I do want to mention is, this is my 18th year in administration for the Astoria School District. I do not recall, and I believe Mr. Hoppus goes back a few years more than me in this capacity. But I do not recall in his 25 years as an administrator in the district, us having a, a male student body representative. And so that's something to consider as well. The voice or interest of our, our vote seems to be not quite as loud or willing.
Have, have we thought about maybe having, like you're talking about in the spring, you start the process. I'm wondering if it would help to have one or two board members come and just sit with that group of students for the student body and just talk with them so they know we're not scary entities sitting up here on the hill? I don't, I don't, I don't know that.
Or what about the buddy system, like two of them instead from the leadership class? Could it even, I mean, I think outside boxers, could it rotate amongst the leadership class? They're getting input. I would like to see like, Newburgh says, I can get us. Anyway, they share the views, their views expressed to the board, their views of the views of students and issues. So like, you know, if in their leadership class, they were maybe discussing a little bit some of the things that were on our agendas. And if they have the buddy system, so they kind of have a support person with them, you know, to share. You know, a perspective, like maybe not, you know, not to feel like it's controversial, that would be even more scary. But like the student perspective.
I think that's certainly a viable option. One of the things that's interesting with this is those other policies, they do talk about having it as a one-year term. And you have to be a junior or a senior. In my time here, I know we've had some that were multiple years. Ms. Corf, I believe, was a junior and a senior for those representative years. We don't have that designated in our policy. Our policy is more brief and more open for our flexibility. So I'm not sure if the board wishes to keep the policy more open-ended, which allows us that flexibility. But. Go ahead.
Become part of the leadership class and, you know.
I do like having a consistent representative, whether that be one or two representatives. Because I'm sure you have noticed board members, the level of confidence that accrues over the course of a student's term. So that when you have a representative in September, sounds different than what that representative sounds like in May and June. So having them have that opportunity for growth, rather than having a first time experience each time by a different representative. That would be my preference, whether that be one or two individuals. But again, it's certainly your, your call, according to policy, our student council's selection process.
And I think some of the school districts are something, even though I'm. I want to say, I was, I think it was at OSBA, some of the districts were saying that they had the student rep sit through the entire meeting. Like really, I guess, kind of delving into that, just kind of the, you know, Robert's rules order and how, how the process worked. It wasn't just a.
And they're welcome to comment during the.
Yes, and they, they don't have the voting capacity, but they have the, they can question and say why, you know, just to get them more involved. So I don't know if that's another, and I hope it ended being able to allow that. They're more than welcome to stay, they're more than welcome to ask questions. I, you know, that's how they're, that's our future.
Want more student voice too.
Right. And then they can take that back and share it with, you know, I don't know, it's just, that's always been kind of one of my questions.
I could tell you that some of the districts that are going through some struggles right now have really, for whatever reason, a number of reasons. But they really leaned on, started to lean more on the student voice during board meetings. Because it impacts them when you've got adults talking about what's happening down. Like one district, like three or four of their large districts, well, three or four student representatives there because they come from different high schools.
Right.
So I think it'd be good, and I can tell you in the years past, when this district went through reshuffling schools and neighborhood schools, there were student representatives. They stayed and gave their input.
Oh, I was thinking, like, Mr. Jackson was kind of handling court, you know, she sat next to me and I'm still in touch with her. And, and she, you know, we're, kind of how I was, I guess you can call it, you know, with her world travels. But she sat there and she would ask me questions and it was like, that's a good one, you know, ask that. But it was, but she stayed through the whole meeting and I think she got a lot out of it. Now she's traveling the world and doing big things. But yeah, I've always kind of wondered why, I mean, not that I don't appreciate that coming and sharing. But I think that they will also get something out of it and realize that there is value to just hearing what the district is doing as well.
I also know that, and I haven't met Elliot, but I do know that it seems like our student representatives are awfully busy people. They're leaving practices, they're a lot of homework, they're really good students. So I, I love the presentation reasons, but I also know they have other like homework.
Maybe if there was two as well, they felt comfortable, they can alternate them or something if that was an issue.
Yes, I, I recognize both of those points, Mr. Hoppus and, and Ms. Rickembaugh. I, I, I know that many of us can recall some of our representatives zooming in from their cars as they bounce out of a practice to give their report and then hop back into their practice at times. So they are very busy, but I certainly, I think inviting them to attend and to engage, especially in topics that may be directly pertinent to them would be valuable.
If something like this, I mean, there's, there's the, you know, especially if it's a senior, it seems to be seniors, but most of the time. Could it be like their senior project or count, you know? Like so that they're getting something better out of it?
Well, I think that because they need so many hours by a certain time, most of, by the time they're getting it rolling. You know, I mean, there's not enough hours of doing this to fill.
At that point, by the end of this. Anyway.
It would probably be, it would probably be about a 20-hour project. If you consider, they typically spend about a, a, one to two hours in researching what they're going to talk about, interviewing students or club advisors. Then meeting with me, they meet with me before each board meeting. And then if they actually stay for the board meetings themselves, it's kind of getting pretty close.
Yeah.
And give them a little leeway knowing it's coming. I was having to add another project on their review ceremony.
And maybe you get more interest.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, yeah, instead of doing it pro bono.
But it'll be month to month, get your project done with, it's all good.
Yeah, I mean, right now they're doing it pro bono. So if they had an outcome as well, a direct outcome besides recommendations from the board, et cetera. In addition to, that could be enticing.
It could be a good incentive for them, yeah.
And we're not scary.
I like that idea. I mean, I like the idea of having two of them, I like the idea of them staying for the board meeting, giving input. Because usually we have, you know, a first reading and so they can take it back to their leadership class and discuss, you know, the much time and.
And if they have questions in between, they could.
Or if they're in the class, they could ask.
And then they may be, you know, show up at the meeting and do public, you know, comments of some of them have questions, like things, I don't know. I think.
They also talked about the middle school.
Sometimes it's a little harder with parents and they're not driving. Students we have, they drive.
Several, several of those policies has some to an open office.
Yes, wearing.
Which I think is good. Makes it more formidable.
I also see that the Tiger Twalton one has an application that they can fill out. Making it a senior project may increase the number of applicants, which would certainly lead to that statement in our board policy where it says, the manner of selection is to be determined by the student council. We would have to have some type of clarity in that process of what that would look like.
Well, maybe, I mean, if there is an application process, I don't know how the other districts run it. But maybe we kind of do it similar to how we do it when we have budget committee members applying here. We just kind of have that question conversation, you know, to see who.
I'll come talk to them, but send them the questions we want to know.
Right, yeah, just kind of the same thing we would do for the interview process. And that would be another piece of, especially with the senior project, that's some more time.
So we had to change the policy, so we would be thinking them instead of the student council, is that what you're saying?
No, I think, I personally think the student council could still pick, but we're part of that process.
We're just asking that question.
We're asking.
When the student council tunes in to.
Or they can, or we go, I, you know, I don't know that we could do it during the school hours. If there's a couple of board members that can do it. Well, they'll get it admitting, I guess.
I put on the policy, just, just in a rhythm, the last line of the first sentence says, the manner of selection is determined by the student council. And something to be evaluated and approved by them.
Is there any? Is there any, I know usually student projects have to start, like. Right at summer, I guess, right after their junior year. Is there legally any reason why a junior couldn't?
Do their senior project?
Yeah, if it was a junior, is that, is that allowed?
Mr. Jackson.
Typically, it's not.
Some can over the summer, I mean, some have.
But that's the summer, I'm saying if it was a junior, you know, like a junior.
Well, wouldn't any juniors applying at the end of the year so that they would start their senior year doing this?
Yes, presently, Astoria High School treats the senior project or the extended application, as the state refers to it. As a capstone project, meaning your, your last year. So for example, for this upcoming class, the class of two thousand and twenty-six, they will be able to start their senior project on June ninth. Um, so June ninth is the date that they can start with their letter of intent, their mentor agreement, and the then accumulation of corresponding hours. So that's where they would kick off.
Which would be perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They could apply in June and.
Yeah.
Um, so, but then we would be limiting it to your seniors or coming seniors.
If they wanted to use it as their senior project. For example, I have one young man on campus right now who is facilitating the Blue Zone project. That's what he's doing, which is a multiple, I mean, tens of hours of volunteerism. That is not his senior project. He has chosen to do something else beyond that. So there is that option, but if they want to use it as their senior project, that would be a capstone requirement as a senior.
So one of the things I'm a bit confused about, if, if we have a heavy emphasis on the senior project, which I think is good, doesn't necessarily mean you have to. Um, then these kids may not be involved with student council.
It's like, yeah, it may not.
Yeah, I think that's okay, right? More children opportunity to, that mean you don't have a voice in leadership to have a seat up.
Yeah, this is a true policy.
I, I do want to state that leadership right now, the leadership class itself is pretty open to. Almost anyone who wants to take it. There are about forty students right now in that class. So it wouldn't, you don't have to be an elected officer to be in that class, you can be an at-large or a, a student who has expressed interest in that course. So that's pretty expansive, but I still don't see it would be necessary as a requirement to do it.
Um, I'll suggest something, and. Whether it works or not, I could go back and revise this ECBA as, actually, she'll be revised since two thousand and three. So that it's us, as my discussion we had around may not involve student council, I can adjust that right back to the board. You can suggest changes, but I would also suggest that I go back and create an AR policy that certainly talks about how we can carry this out. Based on your feedback tonight, uh, you know, I might put things in there like, you know, you must be a resident full-time student and all that stuff. But there will have a tone around senior project. I think there's some, uh, from my standpoint, I, and this is my issue, I've never met one of the superintendents. And maybe I put it in AR, then I should, maybe every other month or something. Yeah, and that could be included as board members, too, but not have to, because I know you have to visit. But, um, then they can get a feel for what's also going on with the school board and a lot of student reps there. So let me put that stuff in an AR and bring it back next month.
And I would have our current representative look at it and provide you back.
Right.
That is something that stood out to me as well, that in other districts, at least by policy. The, the student representative is treated much like a board member in the sense that they're getting the board member packet prior to going into the meeting.
I like that idea too.
Yeah.
My question ends on that. The only thing that they would not be involved in, in the meetings would be the executive sessions.
They can't vote.
Because they can't, right?
Oh, not the executive.
No, but what I'm saying, it's just, they wouldn't be involved in that piece and not the other piece outside of that.
Yeah, I also think that, I don't know what this looks like, but maybe Mr. Jackson can help us with the board and said. I don't want to make the process so complicated that it drives people away from us because it seems like too much for.
I think it, I'm hoping that it would encourage them to do that, that they have that opportunity.
One night. Yeah. Yeah, gathering input.
Because I've, I've watched other districts when they do give input, especially the districts that are really controversial, tough things going, it's very hard to inform them to get their perspective. So.
Well, they're, they're in the midst of it.
I can have something back by next Monday.
All right, uh, and with that, we will adjourn.
Wait, a couple of things first, as you know, and you can tell it's board appreciation, I think, if we couldn't tell, then all you gotta do is look in front of you. The plaques are from the high school leadership team. Theirs, so, um, so with that, we also have a cake in the back that's for board appreciation. And also appreciation for Sheila and her, her husband. So, um, we can take the next fifteen minutes and have Katie, we won't have to stop during the break.
Okay.